Good evening. I call to order the June 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Planning Board.
June 5th.
What's that?
June 5th.
June 5th, June 4th?
June 5th.
June 5th, okay. Shows you where I've been. Sorry, thank you, Dino. June 5th. Just a couple of things I want to mention before we get into it. Just so if anybody's here for Audi Drive or the gas station at 193 Hartford Turnpike, requests for continuances have been made by the applicants. So I'm assuming they will be granted, so. I just wanted to announce that. But first order of business after that is review and approve the minutes. And we do have some minutes. And these are our minutes from our May 1st, right, Dino?
Yes, sir.
May 1st, 2025 meeting.
Yep.
And has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes. I just have one. identification that need to be made. Under new business, discuss and vote upon Planning Board member for complete streets committee. It says it's voted five to one. It was five zero. So that would be.
By acclamation, I was appointed. And I attended my first meeting on Tuesday morning.
Yep. Good.
So we can make that change, right?
Yep.
Thank you. And I'm just, I'm Steve Rota Lakis. I'm the vice chair. I am covering for Julie Holstrom tonight. I should have said that at the outset. Okay, so with that change, any other change or amendments to the May 1st, 2025 minutes?
No.
Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve them with that change.
With approval of the change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes as amended are approved. Okay. I understand we have no bills this evening, Mr. McGoldren?
None this evening.
That's okay. And any comments this month? Matt, any comments?
No comments.
No comments, yes.
No comments from Dino or Perna? Do you have any comments?
No comments.
I have no comments. So I guess it would segue into staff report.
Thank you. Did provide our staff report for our kind of monthly update. Given the agenda this evening, I won't go in detail. I think there's a lot of items on there, but they, you know, fairly speak for themselves. One of the important pieces that we are moving ahead with the townwide economic plan. We also submitted our applications for community one-stop grants for the Edgemere Neighborhood Economic Plan, as well as the master plan update. So we're hoping to be successful on those grant applications. But now we wait to hear back.
Okay. And I would go to, I would. Let's go into the public hearings. And first, we have a proposed residential kitchen special permit, One Brookdale Circle. If I could have the clerk read the legal notice.
Yes. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your first name. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's hearing room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue. To hear the application of Asama Henderson of One Brookdale Circle, Shrewsbury, Mass. 01545, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 6, Evil 1, for by the Planning Board to allow for an in-home customary business. The proposed layout plan is shown on a plan accompanied by the application that is undated and unattributed. The subject property is southerly of Boston Turnpike and west of Cherry Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury or such as tax plate 31, plot 040001. Copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. And on the Planning Board website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/ongoingprojects.
Ms. Henderson, if you could come up and have a seat. And if you could just introduce yourself and explain what your request is.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Asama Henderson, and I'm requesting for a residential kitchen. I am intending to set a spice blend. So it's already grounded up authentic spice. I am originally from Nigeria. And the goal is to make it easier because our dishes use a lot of spices. So instead of using 10 to 15, 20 spices for a dish, I'm looking to combine all of that and have a single bottle where you can go ahead and make a West African meal instead of using multiple spices. So I'm applying to see how I can use my residential kitchen. I live at One Brookdale Circle, Shrewsbury. I've lived there for three years now.
Okay. And I see the request, and I see a set of floor plans. And these are floor plans to your unit, correct? This is a condominium?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, just off the bat, before I turn it over to the other members of the board, have you approached your condominium association or condo trust about doing this?
Yes, I'm in talk with them. It's not been concluded yet.
What's that?
Yes, I spoke with somebody.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm not sure whether that's approved under your bylaws or not. So even if we were to give you this special permit, if there is a restriction or requires approval of your condo board, you're going to have to seek that relief.
Okay.
Because we can't get inside what your condo rules say, okay?
Okay.
All right. So I guess I would turn it over to the board now. Matt, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I was going to ask about the condo association as well, if you spoke with them and received permission. Obviously, you've.
I haven't got. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if you were done. I haven't gotten the feedback yet, but have I contacted them? Yes, I have.
Okay.
Dino, do you have a question?
I didn't know a permit was required for somebody working in their kitchen.
Due to the nature of it being commercial, it does trigger that requirement. Obviously, the scale and scope of this is smaller, but by the letter of the bylaw, this does.
No comment.
My only comment is if the condo association or homeowners association doesn't allow this, when whatever we approve, it doesn't mean anything, you know? So should we wait till we get that confirmation of some sort from the association that this activity is allowed?
Well, the permit could be conditional on her obtaining the requisite approval if it's needed.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd be in favor of that. Yeah, on that condition.
Tim, do you have any other, do you have any questions or comments?
Will there be any signs, Asama, for your business? Any signs on the property for your business?
No.
Okay.
No.
And you're not going to be baking anything, right?
No.
Just going to be mixing the various spices?
Correct.
Okay. And how big are the containers of the, do you anticipate the spices are going to be?
Four ounces.
Four ounces?
Yes.
Okay. Small. Staff have any questions or comments?
No, as noted, I think the scale and scope of this is substantially within the purview of this kind of proposal. But again, the commercial nature of it and selling it does trigger that review and approval. I do know that they're before the, you know, the building inspector's office and health are aware of it, which is.
Where the health?
Brought it here, so.
Yeah, that was going to be my other question. These are all dry goods. Does Board of Health have to be involved?
I don't remember what their final disposition on it was. I know there was an email chain about it, but whether it was required or not, but.
Okay, then any members of the public have any questions or comments? Yes, sir. You can come up and identify yourself and just state your name and where you live.
Here.
Right here. Thank you.
Okay. My name is James Coleman. I live at 87 Brookdale Circle. And I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for the South Meadow Condom condominium association. At this point in time, our master deed is very clear that the buildings in each of the units are intended only for residential purposes. And I know that you've asked already, and I think you've been told this, and I'm sure you're probably going to go back and ask again, which is fine. But at this time, it's just not allowed.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So you are on the association board?
Board of Trustees, yes.
Board of Trustees.
You're one of the trustees?
I am.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, I have a. Actually, you know, Mrs. Henderson asked once already, and she's already been told that. You can ask again for sure.
Yeah.
But I don't know if.
You give it to us, but we can't give it back.
It's public record, yeah.
So she's already been informed that it's not allowed on the master deed. It's also not allowed in the rules and regulations.
So she'd have to seek an amendment to the rules and regs of the master deed?
We would have to do that. I don't want to predict the future or anything like that. You know, I'm not going to make any bets on anything like that, so, but, but.
Does it, okay.
I will say that Mrs. Henderson has crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is as far as trying to open that business. She's registered with the state. She came to you. She did come to the condo association. So she is very, trying very hard to do this, so I'll give her credit for that.
Okay. Now. Ms. Henderson, I'm not an expert on condominium law, but if this is in the master deed, I think you have a kind of tough sledding to go because you're going to have to get approval of a substantial percentage of the homeowners, as well as my understanding is, as any mortgagees. That, that may be a tough thing. So why don't we? You know, I don't want to deny it, but Chris?
If I may offer, typically, there's, I believe it's two years to exercise a special permit once issued. We could potentially grant a special permit as conditioned on the condo association's approval. That would grant the applicant two years to try and make that amendment and provide that. I, you know.
I just don't want. You know. But my only concern about that is, is yeah, that's an okay solution. I just don't want Ms. Henderson thinking that if we bless it, she's okay to operate.
Understood.
I guess. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
When's the next meeting of the condo Board of Trustees?
The last, last Wednesday in June, whatever day that is.
So I guess, is Ms. Henderson on the agenda?
I can put Ms. Henderson on the agenda.
So I guess, why don't we put Ms. Henderson on the agenda? And we can come back on July 10th and see how this goes. I'm not optimistic, Ms. Henderson, based on what Mr. Coleman has showed me. But I don't want to deny you either without giving you an opportunity to re-approach the Board of Trustees. Maybe there's something else in the master deed or the condo bylaws that kind, that could give you a hook to operate, that you might want to look at.
There's not.
There's not, okay.
Yeah. So I really don't know what you gave to them. I wish I had a copy of that.
You were sent a copy of that.
I don't have that.
I can send you a copy too.
Well, it's public records, so we'll provide that.
Well, you can, you and Mr. Coleman can talk after this hearing. And then you can, we can put this on for July 10th. So with that, I guess I would entertain a motion to continue Ms. Henderson's request for special permit for a commercial kitchen until Thursday, July 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Do we have to close the?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Any other members of the audience have any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, sir.
Can you turn your speakers up? We can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'm not speaking into it. Is that better? Okay. Any other members of the audience, public, have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to continue Ms. Henderson's request for special permit for a commercial kitchen until Thursday, July 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, I have Audi Drive, a preliminary subdivision plan at 239 and 247 Boylston Street. And Chris, I understand we've received a request to continue?
We have. I was requested by some of the residents to express some frustration with the continuances of, or the number of continuances. So I just wanted to pass that along to the board.
So noted.
We do have that request.
Okay. Right, and. It's a preliminary plan, so. Richard, you're still representing Mr. Audi?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So you've requested this continuance?
I did.
Because I don't have, so, okay, great. So we're going to continue till July 10th, Thursday, July 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM? If I could have a motion granting the applicant's request for continuance?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. I suppose I can do the request to continue even though I have a conflict on the gas station. The next, there's a request to continue the gas station at Lake 2020 LLC, 193 Hartford Turnpike. And I've heard rumor there may be a special meeting?
Unfortunately, we weren't able to coordinate a special meeting, so we'll be requesting it go to the July 10th.
Okay. And the applicant has requested that continuance?
They've requested a continuance.
Okay. All right, so. I guess I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the site plan approval for Lake 20 LLC, 193 Hartford Turnpike until Thursday, July 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
I make that motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, but I set it up. How's that? Okay. The next is a, on the list of today's hearings is a proposed common driveway special permit for Dan Matt Realty. Mr. Grineer is not here?
We have a representative from his office.
Oh, okay, great. Thanks. So Richard, if you could just identify yourself and.
Thank you.
Sir, if you could identify yourself as well.
Thank you, if it please the board. My name is Richard Ricker, and for the record, my office is at 11 Maple Avenue. And I'm the attorney representing the applicant, who is Dan Matt Realty. And Paul Gardett is seated in the front row, and he is the principal of the LLC.
Okay.
With me tonight also is Mark Allen Carr, who is from JM Grineer Associates. He's here to help with any questions that you may have relative to the plans that have been filed.
All right. And my recollection is, as the May meeting got continued, we had a hearing in April. I know that Mr. Gardett had to go through a, some procedural, he needed some other permits before he could come before us because.
Most notably, the stormwater permit application needed to be filed. We did file that, and I have a copy of that if you want it. The, also, we did, we had to have deep holes dug out there to check the water table, which was done. The plans have been revised according to the findings of those deep hole tests. Those were witnessed and done properly. There was a number of questions that needed to be addressed from Graves Engineering. And those were addressed in a May 20th letter by Mr. Grineer to your board. And I think, and I would represent the board that we believe that all of the requests from Graves have been addressed. Now, I understand that Graves has not responded because of late notice of the filings, which actually were done in May 20th or so. But I think the fact is that I've reviewed what has been filed. Mark can speak to that if you wish. I'm sure that Chris has looked at them. We would be asking you, because of the need to get started out there, we would be asking you to approve the plan, subject to confirmation that Graves is satisfied with the responses that we've given them. As you know, time is of the essence in these things. Mr. Gardett does not want to find himself under winter conditions trying to get work done out there, if he can, if he can avoid it. Time is of the essence, and also, winter conditions mean more money, so. That's the bottom line. We, as I say, we made the changes to the plans such as there was a request for a tight tank for the indoor drain. And we did also show the replacement parking for the neighboring property. They have been parking on the, what has been a common drive there for the greenhouse and house. Now, the requested common drive for the, for the three buses. The. And as I said, the drainage has been verified and documented. So if you have any questions about that, we'd be glad to answer them.
I don't think we have a decision drafted, correct?
We do have a draft decision. And what I would, you know, to the point of the Graves review being the.
Is it on the pile here?
I believe it is in there.
We didn't come up?
No.
You certainly have a thick, a thick set of files there.
Do we have a draft decision? I'm not, I didn't see one.
I didn't see.
Sorry, I wasn't printed.
Yeah. You know. Conceptually, you know, based on my understanding of what transpired at the last and subject to the board members' comment, other board members' comments, and members of the public's comments, I don't think I'd have a problem closing it, but I haven't seen the decision.
Yeah, I apologize. So the Graves review, those items were minor in nature. We were waiting on that. We do have a draft decision prepared. And. But what we just asked is there, that we could do a condition that, that those items be incorporated.
Yeah, but this is a special permit, right?
Correct.
Are there the things that we're going to have to individually vote on?
No, it's just the special permit. Let me pull up the draft decision.
And the horizontal mixed use.
Nope.
And the horizontal mixed use, so it's the site plan and the horizontal mixed use. Common driveway, I mean.
Yeah. Do you want to take this out of order? Maybe put it towards the back of the agenda, print out the decision? Maybe we could take a look at the decision? That sound okay, Richard?
Sure.
First, I.
If they're able to.
Let's, I think we may be able to. Let me go through members of the board. Is, Matt, do you have any questions? Did you sit on this one?
I sat on the first meeting. I watched the second one.
Okay.
And I'm sitting on this one.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments about this application?
No, no questions or comments.
How about, Dino?
I'm all set.
I'm fine.
Tim?
Did the Board of Health sign off on tying into the septic for 334?
They gave verbal okay, but we haven't gotten written sign off. But I will note that Graves recognized that we need the separate sign off before building permit.
Was that a change from the previous plan, site plan?
No, because the house, the house septic is big enough to address the one bathroom that's in the.
Garage.
Garage, yes.
Okay.
It's a four-bedroom septic system for a three-bedroom house, and that was what the Board of Health has been given.
But remains an outstanding.
It does. It does.
Okay. Any concerns for anybody on the board when this property is sold at some time in the future? That they could be sold together, 334 and the garage in the back? Is it a concern?
Because of the sewer issue, because of septic?
Because they're on the same lot, same parcel?
Should be indeed.
I suppose if he wanted to go back and get a variance, because these structures probably predated the town's adoption of the Subdivision Control Act. He may be able to get a, some sort of ANR endorsement allowing for the separation. But until that time, I don't think he can sell them as separate structures.
I think that there would have to be Title V compliance, and that would require either a separate system or approval of a common system. And that is a separate application under Title V.
I don't know, some of these lots.
Mr. Gardett, I would, I would say that he has no plans to sell because he wants to live there, and he wants one of his children to eventually build where the greenhouse is, so.
Sure.
That lacks frontage.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be complicated.
It has to be. Has to be, yes.
Not saying it's a, it's a, it's a stop sign, just to, should it be a concern, that's all.
Yeah, no, and the structure out back lacks front, does it have frontage? The structure out back may have frontage, right?
On the other side, maybe.
But the greenhouse has no frontage.
Correct.
And the common driveway bylaw says that, that the driveway is not to be considered frontage. Okay, so. Any members of the audience have any, the public have any questions or comments about this application? All right, then, what I'm going to do is. Have you found the decision?
No, unfortunately, I apologize. I do not have a draft decision prepared, but certainly comfortable with closing the public hearing at this stage.
All right. That's, okay. That's, that's all right. Like, I guess at this point, you know, I think I understand what's going on here. I know that there've been a lot of eyes on this, on this project, including the Board of Health and the Zoning Board of Appeals because a variance was required.
By a department?
By, yeah, it's kind of a complicated site, but it's all sort of grandfathered. It's been that way for a long time. So I guess at this point, I would, hearing no other. So, I guess at this point, I would, hearing no other questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan and special permit for 334, 338, 338 R. Grafton Street.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hopefully, we can have a draft decision by July 10th.
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Continue that, did July 10th?
No.
Okay.
We close the hearing.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah. The clock's ticking on us.
Right, you won't need any testimony or anything from anybody.
Well, it's closed.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Hopefully, I didn't make a mistake. It'll be the first time, won't be the last, so...
I doubt it.
All right. Next, I have 115 Northeast Cut Off Realty Trust. The property at 369 through 377 Holden Street. Proposed commercial building, site plan approval, and special permit.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Seth Liston, from Thompson Liston Associates, engineers on this project. This is Mike Santos.
Mike Santos from VHB, Transportation Consultant.
Okay. All right. So, my understanding is, we were here in May, and we were just waiting for essentially comments from the town's peer review.
Correct. And so, we did receive some back-and-forth comments. It was, you know, down to even this afternoon that we were kinda doing some of those items back and forth. We do have Maureen, our peer review traffic consultant here. We have not received a formal letter, but we do, we did, you know, had a discussion. I believe most of the items are minor in nature, could be addressed through a condition that, that, subject to a final letter from Bowman, to be reviewed by the planning department. And if there's anything outstanding of substantial nature, that changes the calculations, then it returns to a public hearing. But at this stage, I think that's unlikely to occur. But happy to kinda walk through some of those items in more detail for the board's benefit.
Yeah, okay, it was essentially, at this point, just traffic.
Correct.
And I looked at it, and all the traffic was going to the city of Worcester. And I don't wanna minimize that, but I didn't see it as that big an issue. But maybe the applicant's traffic consultant and the town's peer review can explain me what, to me, and the rest of the board and the public, what the items and controversy are. So, like, Santos.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm just gonna give a brief overview. So, we did receive the peer review letter late last week. We did go through it, and I think that we can address all of the issues there. I don't think that there's anything in there that is going to have any impacts to the findings or conclusions of the traffic study. You know, it's not gonna impact site access, it's not gonna impact any safety issues or traffic operations. So, I just wanted to go through very briefly what was in that letter, and how that would affect, you know, what that means for this, what that means for this project. So, and we plan on following up with a formal letter sometime next week, just to kind of close out the peer review process. So, the last time we were here, since the last time we were here, we submitted the full traffic study. It's been peer reviewed. We've had a chance to look at the letter. Some of the questions that were in the peer review were the specific use of the Holden Street building. I believe on the plans, it said it was an office, and I think that's been resolved. It's gonna be like a light industrial warehousing use. They did ask about the intersection of Clinton Street at Holden Street. So, we are sending a very minor amount of traffic through that intersection, about five vehicles per hour. So, it's, you know, one trip per every like 12 minutes. So, it's not, it's really not that significant. They had, they asked for some clarifications on just some of the technical data in the traffic study, dates of traffic counts, how we developed some of our future traffic volumes, how the trip generation was estimated specifically for the Holden Street building. That was related to whether it was an office or a light industrial warehousing use. And they also asked for some vehicle maneuvering diagrams, so they're sure that emergency vehicles and trailer trucks can maneuver around the site. We'll provide those, but we looked at that, there should not be an issue with that. They did look, they did mention, there's a site distance issue at the intersection of Holden Street at Bow Street. There's a kind of a vertical curvature with a hill. So, we do plan on addressing that through signage or pavement markings. We'll have to work out the details with the town engineer, what the most appropriate measures would be for that. But it'll probably just be something in the form of like a advance warning sign for the intersection. So, I think, you know, all of these comments, nothing's gonna change with the conclusions. As I said, traffic operations at the study area intersections is not gonna have any significant changes from what we had reported in the traffic study. Access to the site is not going to change. There will still be safe access into and out of the site, both on Northeast Cut Off and on Holden Street. There's no safety issues that, no additional safety issues that we need to address, except for the site distance issue on Holden Street, which we will, we will address that. So, again, we'll follow up with a formal letter responding to all of Bowman's comments. Hopefully, it will be satisfactory for them to wrap up this peer review.
I understand that there was nothing from, on the Graves, looking at Graves' letter was...
Again, yeah, very minor in nature, which would be incorporated into the final plan set that we typically require.
I guess I would, I'd like to hear from the representative of Bowman.
Sure. Hi, good evening, Maureen LaPatan from Bowman Consulting. I will say, there was some overlap between when we initially reviewed the plan set, and there were revised plans that were issued kind of midstream while we were reviewing that we weren't aware of. So, our initial comment letter from May 29th reflected the original plan set that had labeled the building on Lot 1 as an office building. So, we did receive revised plans a couple of days ago, and we've started to review those. We had begun to issue a comment letter. But again, like Chris mentioned, most of the stuff is small plan-related items that could be addressed on a final plan set. I think we'd be happy to see VHB's responses to our traffic comments. A lot of it was just cleanup in the traffic report for consistency throughout the report and with what was shown on the plans. I'm happy to hear that there would be improvements at Holden Street and Bow Street. There were a few crashes, there were not too many, but it did show up because the volume's lower as a higher crash rate. And I think signing and striping improvements would help clarify the operations at that intersection. And I think, for the most part, I think the other thing that we were planning on, we have, again, a comment letter drafted for the revised plan set that we received. But the new plan set proposes to land bank some of the parking. There's three spaces on the southerly side of the parking lot that if there is another spot that those could be shifted to on the plan, it would be more ideal for operations at that passenger vehicle parking lot in the front of the building. I believe that the longer entrance might have been requested as part of the fire department's review. But if there's another spot to possibly designate the three spaces for the land bank, I think that would be better operationally if those spaces are needed later on.
Okay. So, we don't have a draft decision on this?
So, we did. So, it was a little bit down to the wire. So, I did prepare one for this evening, hot off the presses. So, I do have them prepared. Again, we could incorporate that condition, that it be, you know, a final review letter be provided to the planning department as that safety valve, that if anything is substantial, it needs to be addressed, it come back. But again, I think most of this is minor cleanup items, so...
Okay, so... Maureen, you're not looking for any additional traffic counts, or...
No, that's been provided, or we requested one intersection in why there were no trips or traffic counts being sent to that intersection. I think it's, like VHB said, it's a small amount of traffic that's going through that intersection that wasn't included in the study area, maybe five vehicles an hour. But we just had a question on why it was excluded and other ones were included, so...
I saw that in the May 29th letter, and I'm just wondering, okay, so...
So, depending on the response, I think, based on the small amount of traffic that's using it, warrants it. I'm hoping you have crash data for that intersection as well that you provided.
Yeah, so, we already pulled the crash data for that. And also, just to let you know, we, you know, we were kind of referring back to the larger warehousing project. And they actually analyzed that intersection. You know, they had crash data.
GFI.
Analysis, and our, you know, our analysis is pretty much gonna mirror what they have in there. We didn't uncover any crash issues. We looked at the crash rates, it's gonna be below the average.
So, if we were able to close this, subject to the board's input and members of the publics, if we were able to close this public hearing and you have a decision, with one of the, are we contemplating that one of these, one of the decision, there'd be one or two conditions? One being that the signage relative to site distance on Holden Street be satisfactory to the town's highway department with input provided by Bowman? And what was the other one?
I mean, I think that would be sufficient, or that the final review letter be provided by Bowman and to the planning department.
Mr. Santos, does that make sense?
Yeah, that sounds great.
So, there's a very small universe of, sounds like very limited of outstanding items. Okay, so I guess I would turn it over to, I'd ask, Matt, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, though.
Do you know?
No questions, yeah.
Tim?
Just after review, it appears that all the stormwater measures are corrected and in place.
They have been, yes.
We talked about it at the last meeting, was Lot 1 a drive-through or a drive-in, or all that stuff? And there's drains and holding tanks?
Exactly.
So, the concern for the town act for is...
Yeah, at this point, we have satisfied all of Graves' condition, all of their suggestions, all of their concerns, as well as the engineer, the town engineers.
Graves, and some things have changed, distance of retention ponds.
Exactly.
From, okay.
Yep.
So, that's all set?
Yes, sir.
Any members of the audience have any questions or concerns about the Holden Street project? See none, Chris, are you gonna tweak that decision now? So, you wanna, you wanna close the public hearing now, we could vote on it later in the evening?
Correct, and I would have to amend the written decision, but we can, yeah, we can do that.
So, we could do that at the end of this evening? Does that, I assume that works for the applicant?
It does indeed.
Okay. So, I guess I, at this point, I would entertain a, do you have any issue with that? To Maureen, no? I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan approval and special permit for 369 through 377 Holden Street.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And understanding that we're gonna vote on that later this evening, you can stay if you want. I don't know if Mr. Chacharoni wants to pay you, well, waits, but...
Thank you very much, everybody.
That's his call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list, should we take 50 Centec, but I have to recuse myself on that?
Uh, yeah.
The de minimis?
I believe the applicant's, yeah.
Yeah, they're here.
The applicant's here.
That one's just a little too close. All right, I'm recusing myself, and Tim is going to be the identity, Tim is the acting acting chair.
Welcome, so next on the docket is the proposed temporary construction entrance, de minimis change for 50 Centec Boulevard LLC. New public meeting for the change to the previous plan. If you, gentlemen, could just please state your name.
I'm John Perry with Langen Engineering.
Jonathan Scott with Prologis.
Could you share with the members of the board and the audience what the de minimis change is all about, please?
Yeah, so, I do have the plans here that I can put up, if I can share my screen, if that's okay? Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the UPS project on Centec Boulevard. And what you see here, this is our erosion control in site preparation plan. And what we're requesting to do is add a second construction entrance on Centec Boulevard. In the northern portion of the plan here, that's the one that is currently installed, that coincides with the permanent driveway for the site.
Mm-hmm.
That's currently being used. We're requesting to install a secondary entrance about 300 feet south on Centec Boulevard here. That would be a temporary entrance, that would be, you know, fully restored when the project is complete. Reason being is, it's a matter of, you know, site safety. There are, you know, on occasion, I guess more than on occasion, folks that are out there, they're giving a protest, singing, kinda walking, you know, around out there. And the police detail out there, it's been very helpful, but for a matter of just site security, pedestrian safety, construction safety, we'd like to add the secondary entrance for use.
Okay. And it's my understanding, after reviewing it, that when the project is complete, this will be returned to, like it was before?
It'll be fully restored, yeah. And I, and just for a little more context here, too, just zooming in on it a little bit, you know, we tried to pick a location in between some mature trees, so that we don't need to cut any, you know, large trees down. It'll, it's some saplings and some understory, you know, vegetation. We'll fully restore the sidewalk, the curbing, and re-vegetate the area.
Okay. Did you already go in front of conservation for this?
We're well outside of conservation jurisdiction for this.
Okay, so it's way beyond any buffer zone?
Correct.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions?
Just a quick question. What is the construction duration time, you know, in terms of like whether it would be just for a year, six months, couple of years?
It would be installed immediately.
Yeah.
Right, and the project duration... Yeah, September 26th, or November 26th, we should be starting to wrap up around then.
Okay. And was there any need or any trigger to go to Grafton Planning Board on this? Or is it entirely within the Schuessprey geographical area?
Strictly on the Schuessprey side, correct.
Thank you.
Do you know where, Matt?
I'm good.
No questions.
It says, it says, "A new public meeting." Are there any members of the audience who have any comment?
As a public meeting, we're not required to take any public comment.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Since there are no further comments, should we entertain a vote on the de minimis change for the proposed temporary construction entrance at 50 Centec Boulevard?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the proposed multifamily development, site plan approval and special permit for Pulte Homes of New England at 33 through... and special permit for uh Pulte Homes of New England uh at three thirty-three through sixty-nine Green Street. Good evening.
Uh Essex Petrie with Pulte Homes of New England.
Matt Leidner with Civil Design Group.
Okay. So um you just, gentlemen, if you could just refresh my recollection uh as to when we concluded at the last hearing. I I read the peer review letters, but what were the uh significant uh items, open items?
Uh so based on our last planning board meeting, uh we were just fresh into the uh traffic peer review. Since that time, we've uh our peer review, or excuse me, our traffic engineer, MDM and consultants, has gone back and forth with Bowman and I believe satisfied um as of yesterday, I think was the latest letter, the the peer review comments um from a traffic perspective. Uh there were, in my recollection, two, I'll call them, items that came up during the planning board meeting that we have been working with staff on since. One was related to a structural geotech letter uh that we provided to uh the planning department soon after that meeting. I believe that is being reviewed by Graves, Chris, if if that's correct, I don't wanna, yeah.
That's for the walls or the slopes, yeah?
Yeah, it was it was specifically related to the slopes.
Yeah.
Yep, and then the um other item was a comment that we had received from the fire department that was then reiterated um uh during that maine- meeting regarding the sprinklering of the duplexes. And uh we have submitted language to the um planning department acknowledging that that Pulte Homes will commit to sprinklering those duplexes as part of um to go into the decision.
I don't see Mr. Mishaw, I always like seeing Mr. Mishaw right here.
Bobby's great and we love his company, but um based on uh the the uh back and forth that um he coordinated with Bowman, um we felt that everything was satisfied.
Okay, um Maureen, do you feel that uh things ha- have been?
Yes, so the the last letter we did send was yesterday, it closed out um all of the remaining traffic items. I would say the last two sticking points, if you will, um was just the site distance table. Was a little difficult to interpret, so we were going back and forth on whether um one of the driveways did in fact meet the site distances. We've got sufficient clarification from MDM that that is the case. And then the additional point um was that now that are there are a few units on the South Street side of the um development, we still recommended some additional signage to reinforce that there are no left turns onto Hartford Avenue from South Street and uh based on the applicant's response letter, they have agreed to um coordinate with the town and provide either funding or signage to um add signage there um in the interim until the mast dot project comes through that would ultimately correct the illegal left turns that still occur at that intersection.
Maureen, you also did the review for the.
The initial review, yes.
Forty B?
Yes, um and and that was a much larger development, just number of units wise. This is now um about half the size based on number of units from a traffic.
Were significantly less.
Yes, from a traffic impact, um it's less traffic just based on um reduced units and there are also townhome units as opposed to the multi-story condominiums that were originally proposed.
Chris, do you have any uh issues, outstanding issues?
Uh no, from a technical standpoint, there's no sta- outstanding issues at this time.
And Graves appears to be satisfied, as I saw the comments, they're very minimal.
Correct.
Okay, Matt, do you have any questions or comments?
No, not at this time.
Do you know?
No question.
No, no questions.
Tim?
I don't have any questions, no comments.
Okay, um I really don't either, 'cause you know, I feel that this is this kinda got stepped on quite a bit during the forty B process, even though it was a lip. And the the size of the project, you know, although the the unit mix has changed, the size of the project is is I guess smaller, particularly from a traffic generation standpoint. So I guess I would open it up to members of the public, any questions or comments? Is everybody here for this project? Remind me asking what you're here for? Wyman Farms.
It's a new business number F.
So there's.
Oh, okay.
So I'll be asking the board to pass over that this evening, so there's um they asked for a bond release and there's substantial work that um still needs to be addressed.
Oh, I I, oh, okay, alright. Okay, I was wondering if I was missing.
Sorry, I was trying to get ready, trying to figure out.
I was as well.
So.
Okay.
Maybe we could take that up next and I can add.
Yeah, they'll take, we could take that, I I believe I have a conflict on that 'cause my my law partner, Mr. Broder, is a a butter to that project over on Bonny Dell, whatever it is. Are we in a position we can close this hearing on Green Street?
So I believe we can close the the public hearing at this stage. We do have a draft decision that is probably ninety percent complete, but it's not not sufficiently complete.
Will this be one of the first MBTA communities that's been approved in the Commonwealth?
No. Uh not maybe not Commonwealth, but no.
You know what?
On this town?
For this town, correct.
I bet you, I bet you it's top ten. Yeah. Okay, so I guess at this point, if hearing no comments from the public, no comments from the board, our traffic engineer is satisfied and Graves appears to be satisfied and staff appears to be satisfied, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the uh multifamily development site plan uh approval and special permit for thirty-three through sixty-nine Green Street.
I make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we don't have a decision yet so to vote on, so but we would have one at July?
Meeting, correct.
Okay.
And my understanding is that there's no opportunity for a special meeting between now and then, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we.
We thought we were gonna have one and.
So July tenth, is that correct?
Right.
Excellent.
You guys are working on your offsite, I know that.
We will be soon, yeah, we 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 uh we're still waiting on Mast D O T.
Oh.
So, but yeah, we're we're very close, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. New business. Uh why don't we take it out of order and I'm gonna recuse myself, discuss on and vote on bond release for Wyman Farms. Good sir, could you just identify yourself as Mister, Mr. Earl's gonna chair this.
Sure. Colin Babcock, Casa Builders and Developers.
I'm sorry, is it Colin?
Cohen.
Cohen, I apologize, Cohen, alright, and Cohen, did you request the bond release?
Uh yes, my uh Steve did, our principal.
Okay. If you could please, if you could please share your position with the board.
My position?
Yeah.
I'm a construction manager for the company.
Oh, I mean, you're you're you're, state your case, please.
My case, okay, so I guess the bu- the bond release was requested, I guess originally there was some comments, I believe four, four comments, um and then and then and then added fifth. The first comment was regarding the onsite detention basin, which was holding some water. We did look into that and what what we believe is happening is um there's an outlet coming from Bonny Dell that neighborhood up the hill that comes into the into the project. Originally during design, uh we tried to pass that outlet under the project and out the other side with something to do with legality and if we did that, then Bonny Dell would be responsible for the pipe going under the project, we weren't allowed to do so. So given that fact, now that we have this outlet and there's right below it is a drain going into our drainage system, which in turn goes to the detention basin that's holding water. And if you go up there, even days after a rainstorm, which I was up there earlier in the week, it was three days after a rainstorm and there's water continuously running out of that outlet, going into the drainage and going to the pond. So given that fact, I'm not sure what we could do to stop that pond from pooling if that water is continuously coming from the other neighborhood above the hill. So that that's what we found there on that first comment. Secondly, there was, I guess, a slope that needed a guardrail, um it's my understanding that that was done, split rail fence.
I I haven't been out to the site, so I have I so the initial um I had an email, initial communication to Alex from Colony Renovations, um that we saw on the site. Detailed four items that needed to be addressed. I had not received uh any communication back. I did follow up again on May thirteenth, um so additionally to those four comments, we found that the um essentially the retaining wall had large boulders. The retaining wall in the upper pond had large boulders that had fallen into the pond and uh needed to be reviewed by um an engineer to determine if that needs to be fixed or you know what work needs to be done there. I then followed up on uh, sorry, again, on May twentieth, um I met uh in passing with Mr. Vanancasa. We discussed uh the status of the project, um so I sent that communication to him so that he had that as well. I followed up uh with him as well on June third to ask if there's any additional items to be addressed and I have not received any communication back to any of those emails as of this date.
Is that, is that the case or?
I I can't speak to that, I'm not sure, I was, you know, I was asked to come here. I did, I did talk to Alex and Steve, I was told the split rail fence was done. I was asked to look into the water, told where it was coming from, I went out there, I did witness it, I I have pictures, I have videos. In terms of the the wall, the wall isn't structural in nature, they're just boulders. It's below four feet, there was no permit for it, so it's not a structural in nature, it's just it was boulders holding up a small slope against the side of the road. And yes, three of them did fall into the pond and it's since since been fixed. I do have photos here if anybody on the board wants to see it.
It's up to the board.
But yeah, so that was done, in terms of the like the split rail fence, I just I asked if it was done, I was told that it had been done. And then I guess there was one other comment was conservation wanted um a closeout and a certificate of compliance and I was told that it was in progress.
Alright, but you have photos proving that that those boulders were were repaired, were fixed?
Correct.
Do you wanna submit those as part of the public record?
Sure.
Sure. So we have to keep them? Okay. When were these taken?
Uh today.
Okay.
And then I also have um if you want to fill the twelve, that is the outlet in the back. Maybe it could be Bonny Dell, which appeared yesterday.
Okay.
With the standing water, the running water running through into the drainage system.
Is the, it sounds like, is the retention pond issue, are is, are you essentially saying this is because of what's coming from Bonny Dell?
That's what we think.
And it's not your problem?
Well, I mean, I I'm not saying what we think is where it's coming from, we're not sure. I guess yes and no. It's not our water, it's coming from up the hill, um it's a neighborhood that doesn't have any detention basins and the water just comes out of a big outlet into our system, it wasn't planned to be that way. And I'm not sure what we can do about the pond puddling because of water that's coming from another development.
Has it, has the, has the town been brought up to speed on this issue, Chris, does DPW?
No, so we haven't been out to the site to verify and I'm I'm receiving these photos.
Okay.
As the board is, so.
Okay.
I have no additional information.
So it's not as if Graves has looked at this at all or any engineer?
No, and and normally we wouldn't have peer review go out, um but you know, what we were seeking is some kind of determination that it's um not structural in nature, that it's been repaired sufficiently. So I mean, these photos would be, we would likely, you know, submit these to the board for their review.
Yeah.
But again, I, you know, I haven't had time to to look at them or or consult with um any of our engineering team to to determine an opinion on it.
Okay, so still an issue, the retention pond, the split rail fence is is fixed or not?
I I I haven't seen it myself, I asked the question, was told it was done.
Okay, the boulders appear to be corrected?
Correct.
And then what was the fourth issue?
Certificate of Compliance.
From conservation?
Correct.
Alright, which is still outstanding?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Any members of the board have any comments, questions?
A site visit from planning board like Chris probably would help clarify a lot of these some of the ones that you don't have answers and also whoever previously mentioned that boulders are going into the pond or they were falling into the pond, we they sent some pictures, make sure we document that with respect to these pictures and if those issues are resolved, I mean, that that should clear our way to release the bond, you know?
Yeah, so I think there's there's two paths forward, the board could um, you know, hold this and and continue to the um to the July meeting, um to um hear it at that time and you know, staff will, you know, coordinate to to try to review these and verify and and get that information for the board's July meeting. I imagine the applicant wants a quicker timeline, uh what I could offer is that we could um approve the release but make the motion contingent that um planning staff um review these items. If you're, if the board is comfortable in delegating them to to staff review, but.
As long as it's said, if it were to be satisfactory to the planning board staff, that these items were resolved. Okay, and this is, is this, this is not a public comment hearing, is it, Chris? I'm sorry. Okay, so with the, so with the four outstanding issues, you know, the conservation seems to, that seems to be taken care of. Uh we still have the retention pond issue and the split rail fence.
Again, I defer to the board, but um seeing the public here in attendance, um you know, my preference to allow them to contact our office and and express why they're here this evening. You know, I'd I'd be interested in that information. Again, the the bond release is the the board's kind of last piece of um.
Yeah.
You know, sign off once that's done, if there's no more um items before the board for a project, so I just.
And I will acknowledge, I did read the the uh the note from Mr. Duchesne.
Can you speak up?
About, I did receive the note and read the note from Mr. Duchesne on the retention pond not draining. Other than that, I didn't see any other comments um provided um from the residents of of uh Wyman Farms, other than Mr. Duchesne, but, okay, so the question is, do we, do we, do we feel good enough to vote on the bond release provided that these items are taken care of?
Correct.
And allow time for the for the for the um Wyman Farms residents to to contact the planning board with concerns and questions?
Cor- correct, and and my um my recommendation in order, in order to to capture the the public comments and and put them before the board, again, I don't know what they are, um my recommendation would be to hold to the July meeting so we could have those comments reviewed in in an open meeting.
I would agree.
Yep.
Board members in favor of that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Alright. I'm sorry.
So.
So so ba- basically, we're we're in agreement that we'd like to continue this to uh the Thursday, July tenth meeting to give the opportunity for residents of uh Wyman Farms to contact the planning board, a planning department with questions and concerns and give the applicant time to sufficiently resolve the four issues that that have been brought up tonight. And then we could vote on the bond release on July tenth, provided that, you know, all of your concerns are heard and acknowledged and addressed perhaps, as well as the uh these outstanding four issues that we've we've talked about tonight and that.
Can I comment on?
Okay, I'm sorry, it's not available for for public comment right now, but you could contact the the planning board, a planning department.
May I ask a quick question, would the July tenth meeting be an open meeting for discussion?
Would the July tenth meeting be an open meeting for discussion, or?
So, i- it wouldn't, so what I would encourage is that residents either contact the planning office, you can email us at planning@shrewsburyma.gov. We'll forward any correspondence to the planning board for their consideration. And that's, that's why we're recommending that we continue so that we're able to capture your comments, and and then the board would deliberate on those in open meeting.
Can I ask a question? Is there a way for there to be a public, to allow the public, considering the number of residents that have shown up tonight? My husband is the president of the condo association, he's ill tonight, and I have to be here, and he had a prepared statement for Mr. Page, who's the trustee to.
Yeah.
There needs to be input from the, the residents because there are significant issues through that result.
I under, I understand, I'm sorry, that, so this isn't a, a public comment hearing tonight, but we do request that you reach out to the, the planning department thereafter, in between now and July tenth, to voice any concerns in writing that you may have, or in person, to bring those up so that when we reconvene on Thursday, July tenth, to vote on this bond release again, hopefully, we'll have all of your concerns in front of us, we'll have the issues potentially resolved by the applicant, and then we can vote on the bond release at that time. Okay?
I understand that, but one thing I want to say is that my husband has multiple times contacted the town with regards to the detention issue, and he's here tonight because the issues have not been addressed.
And that, and that's part of my recommendation. So again, I, I encourage you to reach out to the planning office, and we'll, we'll coordinate on that.
All right.
I'm happy to speak with anyone after the end of the meeting as well.
And since it's a discussion, do we need a motion to continue this to July tenth?
No, just a new business item, but we'll place it on the agenda.
Yeah, so this will be, this will be a new business item on the agenda for the July tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting here at seven P M. Thank you.
Chris, can we, can we go right into, I'm here for the lot release for Cypress as well? The lot release for Cypress? Cypress Ridge.
Oh, sorry. So he's just asking if we can do the one Greenberry Drive, out of order as well?
We'll have to ask the chair. We'd like to do the, the lot release for One Greenberry Drive?
Correct.
Out of order?
Sure. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so yeah, so we're here for the, for the lot release, Cona Babcock. We're here for the lot release for Cypress, Cypress Ridge, and One Greenberry Drive for one fifteen, seventeen, fifty-four, fifty-six, and fifty-eight, Cona for Circle.
Lot release?
Yeah, so this is, so this is the additional five lot releases tied to the fee and lieu.
It's not really, it's a condo project, it's not a lot.
Correct, so, but, so this, this is for release of the units for construction, so tied to the affordable fee and lieu component. The, the payment was phased to allow a release of, I believe it's five lots at a time, with a, a payment commensurate with that fee and lieu for each of those, so we have received the check for the requisite amount to release an additional five lots. Well, not lots, but five units, sorry.
How, how, how much, how much is that, the payment?
Let me get the exact.
Was it twenty-five thousand, two twelve, two twelve thousand dollar checks, I believe?
More than that.
Eighty-seven thousand, approximately.
All right, so, so you've released those, and now he's in a position where he can.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, yes. So, we're gonna, he's made the payment for fee and lieu.
Correct.
And now we're going to be in a position where we will issue building permits?
Correct, it's, so the, the board has released, so we received the first payment, this is the second of those number of installments, so this would release another, another five.
Five units.
Units, commensurate with that phasing schedule that is detailed in the conditions of the decision.
Okay. But this, this is a site, it is not like a covenant with a subdivision.
Correct, yeah, lot, lot.
So we don't really do it.
It should have been unit release.
Yeah.
Yeah, thi- this, this does not pertain to Wyman Farm. Okay. We, we wouldn't be, I wouldn't be doing that.
Sorry.
I wouldn't be sitting on it, that's our problem. So really, his only, so unlike a subdivision where we'd want to say, oh, is there bonding in place? Really, the only thing that the applicant has to do is come in with a check with good funds?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's how we're gonna handle it. Okay. I think I understand now, so it's not really a lot release.
Should have, should have said unit.
That's okay, no, no, you didn't, no, it's not, it's not you. So in light of that, I guess, that, have you been to the site, Chris, recently?
I have, and Graves Engineering is doing our site inspection as well, and is, is regularly on.
Site's been cleared, I assume, and?
Yeah, substantially under construction. Work is progressing fairly quickly. The roadway is, is, at least substantially in for some of the initial paving. A lot of the site work has been completed in terms of grading and, but, you know, still substantially under construction at this stage.
And I haven't heard anything from, we haven't heard anything from a Butters complaining, or?
There have been a butter complaints on this project, primarily related to, you know, the, the stone wall that is currently under construction and replacement. I believe last I was on the site was several weeks ago, and, and by this date, the, the wall was to be, was indicated that that wall would be substantially repaired. I'm not sure this, it is completed yet. I haven't been out to verify, but.
Essentially, we just rebuilt the existing wall, it was an existing fieldstone wall, and we just, we hired a landscaper to come in and, and just replace the stones nice and neatly all the way down.
Okay.
All right, so, you know, in, in light of what this is about, the applicant has produced the check, I guess that I'd entertain a, unless anybody on the board has any thoughts about releasing the, the five, issuing the five building permits, or, or allowing the five permit, building permits to be released, I guess I would entertain a motion to, uh, release the five units.
I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, discuss and deliberate on Nine Walcott Road?
Yes, we have the, the two decisions for that, one for site plan approval and one for special permit. So this is for the two-family that was proposed, or sorry, conversion to a two-family from a single-family. The decision is substantially complete in our estimation.
So there's two, there's one site plan approval and one for the, the one-family, the two-family, correct?
I think he's still gonna get hung up on the variance, but hey, I'm not gonna do his work for him.
Uh, the, the variance, sorry, the variance was approved at the last.
For the two-family?
Correct. So we're, we're the, we're the final, this would be the final decision.
Okay, so he's gotten the variance for the two-family.
Yeah, correct.
Which I suggested to him that he needed at the initial hearing. Okay, great. All right, so, has anybody, everybody had an opportunity to review the decision?
Yes.
I have, I just have a comment.
Yeah?
After reviewing the way the bylaw states, and we've been over this several times, to get to the, to get to, you know, to point four somehow, but the bylaw states clearly that the planning board may issue a special permit for a two-family dwelling that exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by no more than ten percent. So by, if the board finds that the increase would not be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, all right? But that if the board finds that the increase would not be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood is kind of a moot point, because it more or less stops de facto after the ten percent. If the ten percent added to point three zero is point three three. When they were here and, and stated their case to the board last time, they were at, I believe, a point four four, which is more than forty percent above the maximum allowed, in order for the planning board to issue a special permit for a two-family dwelling. So I'm having a hard time with this one. They lack, you know, they lack frontage, they lack the lot area. The structure was built, they changed the appearance of the outside, there's so many things against this to go to a two-family. And I think my math is right, based on what, really reading the literal bylaw enforcement.
You know, and again, I don't think we should be doing the applicant's work for him, which we've kind of been doing on this, so if members of the board have a substantive issue with the floor area ratio, I don't know whether that was covered in the, anything in the variance covered that, but if it did not, then.
Shouldn't that be part of the variance?
You, you should have requested that as part of the variance.
It's, you know, in the, in, to my knowledge, none, none of the sheds on that property were factored into the floor area ratio. And by the bylaw, all buildings on the lot should be included in the calculation. So it's, it could be even higher than what they represented.
So, we've closed the public hearing, and now we want to vote on the two applications?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm just trying to be diligent on the calculation for the floor area, because we requested that the applicant provide that calculation, I'm just making sure that that was included in the decision that we drafted.
Yeah, it is, it's on page two of seven, Chris at the bottom. Proposed fires point four four and requires a variance from the Z B A, and the variance was granted by them.
Correct.
However, notwithstanding that decision, the bylaw is clear in terms of the planning board's responsibility in order to issue the special permit. That's where I'm having a problem.
Have you got a variance?
Thank you, so that's, I was trying to remember how we had tackled that from the prior meetings, so the special permit will allow the issuance, it's, it both need to happen, both the variance and the special permit in tandem for this project to be permitted. The variance was to, because the calculation does exceed the planning board's authority, so this would cover the planning board's authority to issue up to that amount, and the variance covers the applicant's ability to essentially go beyond what the planning board is issuing.
So the Z B A is the higher authority here, is that what I'm hearing?
You don't want to give them the special permit and then vote against it?
All right.
So the, so the Z B A, their variance allows him to go beyond the maximum, so that they essentially waived that maximum requirement.
Got it, okay.
If you don't like it, it's, it's within our discretion to deny it.
Okay.
So you, you want to take up that one first? Because it kind of moods, if it gets denied, it moods everything else. And that would be?
For the application of two.
Site plan approval. Right?
Separate, the application for a two-family use.
Oh, right, I see, application for two, the special permit is regarding.
For the two-family.
For the two-family.
Yeah.
Okay. So, at, at this point, I guess, I would entertain a motion to consider the application for special permit on the two-family use and the floor area ratio up to four point zero, which has been, the applicant has obtained relief from the Z B A on. And, and in conjunction with that, I would, I would, I think I gotta poll the members. Okay, well, Matt, you watched, right?
Yep.
So he's a voting member. I'm a voting member, because I, I missed a meeting, but I did watch. All right, so.
So he's a, sorry, Matt is a voting member on the.
Special permit?
Correct.
Okay. So we're gonna have to amend that, because this, Julie is the.
We can amend the vote sheet.
We can amend the vote sheet. So Matt, you're gonna have to go upstairs and get Holden Street anyhow. Are, you in favor of the special permit in accordance with Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section six, table one, use regulation for two-family dwelling in the Residence B two zoning district?
Yes.
Okay. Dino?
Yes.
Herna?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
And I'm not in favor of it either. So, I guess we'll go to the, we'll go to the, this is another vote that has to take place. Go to the special permit in accordance with the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section six, table one, use regulation table to allow maximum floor area ratio F A R for two dwelling, of two-family dwelling in the Residence B two zoning district. Matt, are you in favor of that?
Yes.
Dino?
Yes.
Herna?
I'm in favor, yeah.
Tim?
Steve, I'm sorry, are, are you asking about site plan approval or a special permit?
Especially, there's, there's two things we have to vote on in conjunction with the special permit.
No.
I'm not either. Yeah, I had to poll every member on each. Even though it kind of moods it, but if he, if, if there's an appeal. Okay, now the application for site plan approval for a two-family dwelling. I would entertain a motion on the decision of the planning board regarding the application for site plan approval.
I make the motion.
Make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you, you can't vote on that. I'm, I'm against it in light of the denial of the special permits.
Yeah, no.
Yep. So fix those decisions, we'll have Matt sign and Lou and Julie.
Yeah, we can sign them up, yeah.
And I don't envy you tomorrow, but it is what it is. Okay, why don't we take up four thirty-five South Street?
So we have a draft decision for this as well, so this is for the site plan modification of the Al Hamra School. The draft decision's been prepared, and we've included some conditions for the, the minor remaining items that the building inspector has requested, that those be provided as part of the final plan, so.
Okay, so, at this point, I would entertain a motion to authorize the clerk, Mr. Fitzgerald, to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding the Application for Site Plan Modification. to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding the Application for Site Plan Modification Approval. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set.
I have one of the ones.
Oh, the hearing's closed, there's nothing you can say, Ali.
No, I have bond placement for.
Bond? The next item.
Next item.
The next, next item, okay. Okay, discuss and vote tri-party on Hyatt Circle.
So this is a two-part, both C and D for Hyatt Circle, also known as Gulfview Estates. So the request is to release the covenant that is in place and, and put a tri-party agreement in place in its stead as the project surety for the board's recollection. This is a cluster subdivision that was approved back in August of 2017 and is under construction as we speak. Some of the roadway work has been completed. I did work with town council up to this afternoon on the tri-party agreement that is before the board. And they're in agreement that it is adequate. There are one request, we did find that the decision has not yet been recorded at the registry of deeds. So that should be referenced on the plan set, the.
It's a cluster, that's a special permit, right?
Uh, it's a preliminary subdivision for.
Decision was recorded, I emailed you this afternoon.
Definitive subdivision, right? It was a cluster, didn't, doesn't require a special.
Sorry, it's a definitive subdivision and then special permit to do cluster, correct.
Okay.
Decision was recorded.
Okay.
I emailed you later, looks like you were busy.
Oh, okay. What's that?
I think it was like three o'clock, four o'clock I emailed.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
You started construction.
Correct.
Someone's got, Walter, someone's gone, someone's gone out there, verified the amount we need to, for the tri-party.
Correct, yeah, so the, the tri-party covers the, the full construction amount and, and is in keeping with engineering's recommendation.
So no lots have been, how many lots are we rela-, no lot?
None, none have been released to date. So that's, this would, by instituting the tri-party agreement, it would release the buildable lots. There is the, a number of the lots were conservation restricted as well. But this would release the buildable lots by releasing the covenant, release them for construction. For construction, correct.
Okay.
And then the tri-party agreement would control. So the tri-party agreement is the surety that, like the covenant, would require the work and the roadway, the ways and the drainage to be completed to plans. Otherwise, the board could pull on the.
How much is the type?
Two hundred and forty-nine, two hundred and.
Two hundred and forty-five thousand.
How long is the road? It's been so long ago.
Maybe five hundred, less than five hundred feet. The binder is in, all the drainage is in.
Okay.
Detention on everything.
Been inspected, everything is.
Yeah, everything is inspected.
Because I remember that was a tough site.
Yeah.
Sorry, two hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay. So I guess, why don't we vote on the tri-party first? I entertain a motion to approve, is it, is it a passbook? Or is it a?
It's tri-party.
Oh, so it's a, which bank?
Main Street Bank.
Main Street Bank, okay. I guess I entertain a motion to approve the tri-party agreement between the applicant, Main Street Bank, and the town.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now that we've approved that, I would entertain a motion to release the covenant for the entirety of the lots. Which, how many lots are there?
Four.
Four?
Yeah, five.
Four buildable, five, because five would trigger the inclusionary.
In, yeah.
Four new lots.
Four, four lots, I entertain a motion to release the four lots from the covenant on Hyatt Circle.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have something we got to sign?
Uh, yeah, so this is the tri-party and then the 435.
Okay.
Start with that one. Here, I might as well start with you.
Um, there's only two items that are left on the agenda if we want to.
We got to sign the decisions, we got to sign the decisions on, the amended decision on Walcott and the decision on.
That's right, yep. We could do those after the meeting, right?
Yeah, but I got to poll people on the, because it's a special permit on Holden Street.
Yeah, we're going to vote at that at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, it's not something we got to vote.
Yep.
Okay, you want to discuss and vote on supporting community one-stop application for the master plan? Then we can take a five-minute adjournment, come back, you can go get the, the two decisions, and we can execute the decisions on Walcott and vote on the decision on Holden Street. Is that getting confusing?
Agreed.
Kind of.
No.
I know, your release.
I didn't know if you needed a.
No, no, no.
So just briefly for the community one-stop, we did have some, some letters of support drafted. I'm happy to, to provide them as supplemental materials. The deadline for the community one-stop applications was yesterday. Those applications have been submitted, as I noted in my staff report. But we just wanted to put that before you, if you wanted to submit one, those letters, we can certainly offer that as a supplemental after-the-fact information. But we did receive a number of other letters of support as well, but we're just trying to capture as many as we can to, you know, show that support for those two projects, the master plan update and the Edgemere neighborhood economic plan.
Okay. So I guess. A quick comment on that, not necessarily relating to this, but remember when we were dealing with the MBTA zoning, there was talk that if this wouldn't pass, then some of those grants may be impacted. So that passed and that's, okay, so the, it should, it should not impact these grants at this stage, right?
Correct, both of these programs, or both of these grant applications do have a question on the compliance of the community. We were able to report on both of those, that we are in compliance with those guidelines.
I think that was the tri-party, do we have the covenant release?
Um, I can.
I only took, yeah, I only took the, the tri-party to sign, Chris, there was, I think there was another one underneath it.
I'll, I'll grab it, yeah.
Okay.
Just a quick follow-up on that, Chris, like what is the ask in, in these two grants, like how much are we asking?
Uh, sorry, so the, so the community one-stop, yeah, the community one-stop is looking, or the master plan update is requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is the maximum with a local match to make up any remaining items. Typically, they run about two fifty to two seventy-five, so there will be a, a match, but that was approved at town meeting. So we have sufficient funds to cover that. And the local match, having a substantial local match is typically useful for making the, the grant competitive in terms of other community applications. The Edgemere reused plan is requesting, it's a request at fifty, fifty thousand dollars with no local match other than staff hours as a, as in-kind services.
Okay, so we have two. We have to vote on the supporting community one-stop application for the master plan update. I guess I would entertain a motion on that.
I make the motion.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And discuss and vote on supporting the community one-stop application for the Edgemere Village Gateway Study. Can I have a motion?
Make the motion, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would move that we adjourn for ten minutes so Chris can get us the decision on Holden Street and the amended decisions on, the two decisions on.
Can I get fifteen, I just want to make sure.
Walcott, yeah, fifteen.
Nine Walcott.
You want to tell her? Thank you. Just so we can. I, I move that we adjourn for fifteen minutes to, so we can clean up some paperwork relative to Holden Street and Walcott Circle. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is, we're back live. This is the June fifth, twenty twenty-five, uh, public meeting of the planning board. And we did a short adjournment so we could print some documents and vote on the decisions for the Holden Street property. Uh, we closed the public hearing earlier this evening. And now we have the decisions on the special permit, because it's in the Aquifer, and the site plan approval for the Holden Street, the warehouse in the smaller building. So I guess the first order of business, I would entertain a motion to authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding the Application for Special Permits. It's the three sixty-nine through three seventy-seven Holden Street. And the condition is, what is the condition that you put in, Chris?
What have I been there, the, the condition for the signage to be added to the final plan set and the remaining comments from Bowman to be provided to the planning department.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I, I make the motion.
To approve the special permit, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim, you may sign. Oh, this, no, this is, I think that's the site plan, this is.
This is the special permit?
That's the special permit. Oh, there's two of them?
It says, it says the same on both of them for number one. Application for special permit for construction of two commercial buildings.
What's the permit number, planning board permit?
They're both the same permit number technically, because they're applied for both in the online permitting system.
PB twenty-five four.
Oh, that was the, this was for the Aquifer, okay, let me see that one then.
One should say special permit, one should say site plan.
It doesn't, but that's okay.
Special permits.
But this, because I, I thought I'd have to poll everybody, because.
Yeah, we have the vote sheet for the special.
There's a vote sheet, okay, so I'm, I'm gonna, we're gonna redo this, okay? Is that the site plan approval? Because it says special permit. What's the permit number?
Uh, PB twenty-five dash four.
Yeah, that's.
Site plan approval.
But it says special permits on the title, right? Okay.
Let me open it.
We're gonna redo that. Right, because I, I think we just voted on the site plan approval, because I was supposed to poll you on the special permits. So at this point, I would authorize the plan, I would entertain a motion to consider the decision of the planning board regarding the application for special permits. Do I have that motion?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Now I'm gonna poll everyone. Okay, uh, this one still says Julie. On one of the polling sheets.
I probably gave you the wrong one, I don't know.
Okay. Why don't I proceed with the vote and we can sign it? First vote is vote for special permit in accordance with the zoning bylaw, section six, C four, B four, for special permit in the Aquifer overlay district to allow for non-residential use that results in an impervious area greater than fifteen percent of the lot area, twenty-five hundred square feet. Matt, are you in favor?
Yes.
Perna, are you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Tim, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Okay, next is a vote for special permit in accordance with, oh, wait a minute.
Sorry, so that, so there are two special permit vote sheets.
But it's the same.
Only meant to be one, there's one special permit, so.
Okay, then I guess we're good. Okay, then we're good. But there's no, on the back, there's no, Tim's still got to certify it.
Correct.
All right, so I just need Tim's certification on the back.
It should be on the, so that'll be on page seven of nine.
It's not. Because it's, I suppose we can just have a duplicate vote sheet that doesn't get signed?
Correct, it was, the vote sheets, there's two of them, one of them will have Julie's name on it. I added a second vote sheet that has Matt's name on it.
Yeah, but there's no condition twenty-one on the back.
Because it's printed double-sided, so we'll just have to reprint it.
Okay, Tim's got to sign it.
Correct, we could just scan it and remove that.
Okay. All right.
It's an erroneous vote sheet on that, yeah.
Why do I think I'm gonna be resigning this? I'm good with it.
So this one, Chris, seven of seven pages is not.
That's a site plan approval.
So that is a site plan approval.
That's the next vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Are you gonna replace the cover sheet?
Yes, there isn't, there's just, there isn't a vote sheet attached to that.
Then it doesn't have to be, it's a site plan approval.
Okay, fair enough.
But it says special permits.
At the top, yeah.
Now you're gonna sign the one on the back. Oh, you, yeah.
I haven't signed here yet.
Yeah, you signed there.
So here, and ideally it would be there, but it's not.
It's okay.
But we'll go there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just printed the whole thing, uh, it's just a site plan.
He's gonna fix that.
It's the special permit.
You just, now we just need the site plan approval?
Yep.
And we're gonna hold off on Walcott?
I'd like to, just to make sure we're getting it right. Uh, in, in terms of writing it.
Okay. And you're gonna give us the covenant release?
Correct, for the next meeting as well.
Okay. Anything else that we have to sign? Does Tim have to sign the, the Alhamra?
Uh, I already did.
You did? Okay, next we have uh, the decision of the planning board regarding the application for site plan approval for, uh, the three sixty-nine through three seventy-seven Holden Street, uh, Shrewsbury. Do I have a, a motion to authorize the clerk to exec, execute this decision?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, that's site plan, I don't know if you can do that, right?
No.
Second.
Second. Dino, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is that it?
Yep.
Tonight, I would entertain a motion to conclude this evening's public hearings.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My head's a bit...